Times the heat games start? Doesn't. Heat game starts at eight thirty, right?
Yeah.
We're gonna.
Let's just be hopeful there will end exactly at eight thirty.
Yeah, right.
Twelve minutes after.
All right.
Thank you. This is.
I know.
Ask me why. Where you were. Check the whole.
Is that fitness pool box?
I don't see them.
Oh. Mm hmm. Teen. No, I can't. We need.
We don't. They have to be the graduate. Next year we will have. Yeah. I'll move it up to them to.
Cool.
And he came like this was going on while we were doing. And so somebody was looking at their thing and they're going, oh, the heat is. And look, there's some telling me. The weight, you want to just tell you how they do. No, no, I watch it and then late after we left, he's sitting there watching that. But he's fast forward, it's through commercials.
Sure, of course, that's the way to do it, actually.
That's actually smart.
Actually, you know, I occasionally the blood donation thing they call and they. I've given blood and get two heat tickets, which is wonderful to bring. The last time I couldn't give my arms too low, but.
Vice Mayor Fahed. Councilman Best.
Present.
Councilwoman Bravo here. And Councilman Vasquez will be absent tonight. Okay, there's a quorum present. Thank you, let's all rise for an invocation by Vice Mayor Fahed.
Let us pray. This evening, we ask for the patience to listen to others, the open mindedness to consider dissenting views, and the foresight to make decisions that are in the best interests of our beautiful city. Amen.
We ask the audience to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, welcome everyone to our meeting tonight of May twenty third. We're all happy to see your smiling faces out there and for those that are joining us virtually. Um, our first agenda items are going to be the awards and presentations and the first presentation or award is recognizing the Optimist Club essay contest winner, Janessa Montilla. And we have Mr. Fulton here to speak about that. Oh, it was.
Check, check, check. Sure if it's on, but that's okay. Yeah, I think so. There we go. Okay. Good evening, Ms. Mayor, good evening, council members. I'm James Fulton from the Optimist Club on the Miami Springs Virginia Gardens Optimist Club. I'm the current president of the club and we have a essay winner, contest winner here with us tonight. Justina is, she's sponsored by us for the international essay contest. She won at the club level and then went on to compete and win the two hundred, excuse me, the twenty five hundred dollar scholarship at the South Florida district level. She's sixteen years old and she will read her essay today on this year's topic. How does an optimistic mindset change my tomorrow? And we would also like to present her with a hundred dollar check as well from our local Optimist Club as well. So, Ms. Justina, come on up and read us your essay.
Hi, everyone, I'm Janessa. Okay, so. How does an optimistic mindset change my tomorrow? I vividly remember the very first time that I watched the movie Finding Nemo. It was movie day in my preschool and my classmates and I were eagerly waiting on the multicolored carpet to see what movie we'd all be watching that day. I remember my teacher carefully inserting a C D into the DVD player and all of us patiently waiting for the television screen to change color and display a movie title. Finding Nemo appeared on the screen and some kids gasped in excitement while others like me hadn't heard of it before. Only fifteen minutes into the movie and I was already mesmerized by the brightly colored sea creatures and captivated by each character's amusing personality. By the time the movie finished, I was introduced to a concept that I hadn't been introduced to before. Optimism. Throughout the movie, Dory's optimism and positivity led to Marlin eventually finding his son Nemo. Dory's motto, just keep swimming, was a message that I really resonated with and it remains an important lesson for me that I quickly applied to my life in the following weeks. At the age of five, I learned about optimism and how having an optimistic mindset could change my tomorrow by allowing me to truly believe in myself whenever doubt set in and also by allowing me to live a happy and positive life. To begin with, an optimistic mindset will allow me to believe in myself whenever doubt attempts to infiltrate my mind. According to author Hyman Sunim, do not let those who criticize you determine your destiny. Every time you hear from your critics shout more loudly, no matter what you say, I won't give up. Let's see who is right in the end. His advice has helped me to overcome difficult situations in my life where I was afraid of doing things because I was worried about criticism. An example of this happened recently and I use optimism to overcome my fear of being judged. Ever since second grade, I'd always dreamed about making a music related social media account where I'd upload song covers on a weekly basis. Seeing other people post covers made me want to post my own. However, I was hesitant because I was afraid of how others would critique them. A million thoughts raced through my mind whenever I thought about the idea of it. Would they think I was a good singer? What if I fail and no one watches my videos? I recently finished a novel and I came across this quote. You can't avoid trying at anything in case you fail, he told her gently. Failure is a necessary part of growth. By reading advice from Sunim and Hibbert, the answer became clear. I knew that I had to do it. With the help of my brother and my parents' support, I made a TikTok account on New Year's Eve twenty twenty one and posted my first song cover. I understood the importance of risk taking and using optimism to disregard negative thoughts. We all tend to blow up scenarios in our minds about all the terrible things that are going to happen. Most of the time, we are wrong. What if people like my voice? What if everything turns out better than I could have ever imagined? No matter what happens with this account going forward, I accomplished something that my younger self had always dreamed about and it was all because of a concept called optimism. Furthermore, an optimistic mindset could help me live a happy and positive life. The law of attraction, a worldwide concept, is the law that determines the complete order in the universe, every moment of your life and every single thing you experience in your life. Thoughts are sent out into the universe and play an important role in determining one's future. If I maintain a positive mindset, I'll end up with good things because I'm sending positive frequencies out into the universe. Throughout our lives, we can't always control our circumstances, but we can control our responses to them. By improving my thinking, my day will drastically improve, clearly exemplifying the power of the law of attraction. Good thinking is the first step in living a happy and positive life. There are a few ways to ignore negative thoughts. Exercise, talk to your mentor, meditate on loving kindness. In daily situations that we face, it is important to remember the benefits of being optimistic. To conclude, an optimistic mindset could change my tomorrow by helping me believe in myself when there's doubt and by allowing me to live a happy and pleasant life. Difficult situations will occur throughout my life, but I know that with an optimistic mindset, I'll make it through regardless of the circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Janessa. And we have a, we have a certificate for you.
Janice.
We have a certificate for you from our city council, so we'll present it to you. Let's all go and we'll take a photo with you. The certificate of recognition is presented. For winning the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two Optimist Club South Florida Best Essay Contest. Yes, because you're very talented. Hey, how are you?
Ah, sorry. I don't have one of the numbers. Mine has a button on it, so. All right, ready guys? One, two, three, one, two, three. Outstanding.
I just wanted to take a moment and thank the council and the mayor for their support for the Boy Scout troop three, three, four. The day that you presented the, the summer camp donation gift to us, I was on a different. I think I was on an Optimist Club event, so it was hard to be in two places at once. But I did want to extend my gratitude and say thank you very much. When the boys get back, then we will come and do a little presentation about Camp Palanah in Northern Virginia and share all the excitement with you, okay?
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. And Jim, thank you for mentoring, you know, your Optimist Club, Boy Scouts, all that you do. You know, I feel so strongly that our community, the adults in our community that take the time to be mentors and to help with these clubs. It's invaluable.
Thank you.
The legacy that you leave.
Thank you very, very much. As a matter of fact, last night was the council dinner for the South Florida council and they awarded me a Silver Beaver and that's the highest.
Congratulations, that's wonderful.
Playing the Boy Scout game since two thousand and ten and all my hard work finally paid off. That's not what it was about anyway. It's always about for the youth and for the scouts. That's, that's the number one right there.
You've always been about that, sir.
Always, always.
Thank you. Okay, so the next agenda item is a presentation of the unit citation award to the Miami Springs Detective Bureau and Crime Suppression Team for the month of April. Deal?
Good evening, everyone. Pardon Chief Guzman's absence, he's on a little mini vacation. So I will be handing things off to Lieutenant Frank Perez, who is the division commander for the Investigations Division. And he is the one that put these officers and detectives in for this unit citation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'll be reading the nomination letter for the unit citation award. Based on an anonymous tip of possible narcotics activity, the Miami Springs Police Department Crime Suppression Team was assigned a surveillance detail for six one seven Mokino Drive. After an extensive investigation involving both CST and the Detective Bureau as well as direction from the state attorney's office, a search warrant for the aforementioned residence was acquired by CST Officer Christopher Caroga with assistance from Detective Jason Hall. On April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the City of Miami Police Department SWAT team assisted the MSPD Investigations Division in executing the warrant. During the course of the search, suspect methamphetamine, heroin, psilocybin mushrooms, oxycodone, alprazolam, tupentadol, large quantities of GHB and paraphernalia consistent with both narcotics possession and distribution were found in multiple locations in the residence. This included eleven used hypodermic needles with traces of blood and narcotics residue that were found inside the room of a ten year old child. As a result, four subjects were arrested and charged with multiple narcotics violations. The primary target of the investigation was charged with thirteen criminal violations, including grand theft auto, child neglect, and distribution of GHB within one thousand feet of a school. Most important of all, a ten year old child was removed from a highly dangerous situation. Although CST Officer Christopher Caroga took the lead in running the operation with assistance from Detective Jason Hall, all members of the Investigations Division, including Detective Robert Barrios, Detective George Pacheco, Detective Jacob Dweck, and CST Officer Fenisette Iribar assisted with the initial investigation, the execution of the warrant, and the subsequent arrests. This highly successful operation resulted in the seizure of large amounts of narcotics, four felony arrests, the dismantling of a narcotics distribution operation, and the safe relocation of an endangered juvenile. The Investigations Division as a whole exhibited the highest level of professionalism and teamwork while helping to ensure the safe and effective execution of this operation. As such, I respectfully request that the entire Investigations Division, both the Detective Bureau and the Crime Suppression Team, be considered for the unit citation award for April twenty twenty-two. Today, our CST Officer Caroga, Detective Hall, and CST Officer Iribar.
Thank you very much, our community, for protecting our community, the thought of the address that you gave, that it is near two schools and a major playground and sports field and, and also the child that was in that environment that, you know, was, it was the harm that could have, that has probably come to him already and could continue to come and, you know, that, that we were able to intervene. So we're very, very grateful for the type of constant surveillance and protection and work that you do. And I know this is on a tip of the iceberg, it's going on all the time. Thank you for our community.
Just if I threw the chair, if I might, in addition to what the mayor just correctly stated, I think that one of the most primary aspects of the whole thing is certainly the uncovering aspect of it. You don't want to scare them away and then being able to jump when you need to jump and make, make an arrest. You guys did the same thing on Thirty-Sixth Street with the, with the hotel and the human trafficking and stuff too. I assume it's the same group that I'm talking to here. So just the knowledge that something like that can exist in our city is appalling. And for you guys to uncover it and, and get a positive arrest out of it is hats off in my book, big time. Thank you very much.
Do it, Chair. Yes. I know it's redundant, but I'm going to thank you every day until I can anymore physically, so thank you again. So when I see you again, thank you again and thank you and thank you. God bless you.
Yes, and let's get a photo, we don't have. I wanted to say that, you know, so often in our community, we hear complaints about different things, but I think we all as residents very often take for granted how safe we feel in this community. We, we feel safe walking, visiting our neighbors, you know, being outdoors in the backyard, just enjoying our community and really that's, that is because of our amazing police department that on a continual basis works very, very hard to make sure that our community, that we feel like that, that we feel safe and we are safe in our community, so thank you again. Um, the next agenda item is presentation by the National Fitness Campaign on a thirty thousand dollar grant for developing and implementing a fitness court in the city.
Mayor, before we begin with the presentation, let me just read the agenda memo into the record. During November of two thousand and twenty-one, Omar Luna applied for a grant from this organization in order to install a fitness court in the city. Recently, we received notification that we have been awarded the thirty thousand dollar grant. You can see the attached grant award letter in your pocket. As you can see, the total cost of this court will be a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Less the thirty thousand grant for a net cost of the city of a hundred and fifty-five thousand. The National Fitness Campaign Group is here tonight, be assumed, in order to provide council with an overview of the project as well as details of what the court would look like and include in the form of different fitness stations. Omar and I agree that the best location for this court would be along the Curtis Parkway median, probably near the golf course parking area. Miami Gardens has already approved their fitness court in their city under this program. If council approves of this project, we can begin the process of reviewing funding alternatives for the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar cost and bring back to you how this can be funded. We're currently working with the engineers to get final cost estimates on the Oakwood East Drive Stormwater and Road Project, which as expected has significantly increased from our original estimates. Once we know this cost, we can calculate how much we will have available in ARPA funds for other projects, including this one. Are they?
Thank you, Will. Hello, Mike, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Just me hear you.
Great, so if, if I'm on, I'm going to say thank you very much for your time. And in order to have a timely presentation, I think the best way to start is for us to show our, our video and then maybe I can use the support of a, of the visual presentation to answer any questions. Does that sound like an okay process for you all?
Sure.
It sounds good.
Great, so I'm going to attempt to share my screen and share the audio of the video that we have on our website, but let me see if this is going to work for us, okay? Oh, except for I, I think I need to be enabled for presentation.
Okay, give us a moment.
Sure. And I think we're good.
You're made co-host, so you can share screen now.
I got it. So let's make sure that I'm sharing the right screen. Are you guys seeing a very cool looking artistic outdoor gym on your screen?
We're seeing a very cool yellow rectangle with nothing in it. There you go.
There may be a delay just for internet purposes, it's been lagging, so.
Okay, well, this will be interesting from an audio perspective to see what kind of delay we have. But I'm going to run this video, hopefully it works well and then I'll be able to answer some questions for you.
We're changing the way America thinks about fitness. With two hundred fitness courts open, our campaign is growing. From college campuses to city parks and trails, we're bringing free fitness everywhere and we're just getting started. Hi, I'm Mitch Managin, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. National Fitness Campaign was founded in nineteen seventy-nine when we opened the first fitness court. Redesigned for the twenty-first century, the fitness court is the world's best outdoor gym. Our seven movement, seven minute system allows you to use your own body weight to get the perfect workout. Easy or hard, it will work for you. Our goal is to build healthy communities by making outdoor fitness an essential part of people's lives so that each day is better than the last. Now more than ever before, it is vital that we move fitness outdoors to remain safe, healthy, and strong. Michiganers, we, as soon as we can, we go outside, which is one of the reasons why the fitness bar was such an attraction to us. What impressed us most was their basic philosophy that they want to provide world-class fitness for free. Truly, anyone can use, no matter what your age is, no matter what your physical fitness level is, no matter what your skills are, it is very adaptable. Thousands of certified ambassadors will be trained to deliver classes, challenges, and clinics as part of our National Fitness Campaign. New programs are. New programs are bringing students outdoors across America. The Fitness Court mobile app is your gateway. To enroll in these programs, simply scan the new digital wall with your phone to access a library of free workouts designed to optimize your experience on the Fitness Court. Learn the moves and take challenges as we dig deep to create impact for our partners across America. This year, we are thrilled to introduce Fitness Court Public Art. Cities have the opportunity to select a local artist to design their fitness court using the power of the arts and fitness outdoors in iconic public spaces. We're proud to have helped cities of all sizes raise millions of dollars from respected sponsors to support free fitness. Wherever fitness is a priority, you can find a fitness court. Building beyond 200 cities and colleges, we're partnering with large cities using urban movement data to map the best locations for healthy infrastructure. We're bringing fitness courts to within 10 minutes of population centers everywhere.
They provide these wraparound services that, from a city's perspective, that's what you want in a partner like this. You want it to come, presented to you on a silver platter with a bow tied around it. They're one of the best partners, I think, that I personally have ever worked with.
We serve almost 1.2 million members across Michigan. And this partnership really is an opportunity for us to bring scalable, free health and wellness opportunities for our community. So I would actually invite cities and organizations, big and small, to explore the opportunity to invest in fitness courts. To be very honest with you, the feedback from different municipalities and different communities has been very positive.
We're committed to raise $150 million to bring the campaign to 1,000 cities and schools, building the largest fitness movement in the world. Join us. Let's make world-class fitness free.
Hopefully, you were able to hear the audio. Did that come through okay?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Great. So I think from here, what I'd like to do is I'll bring up a presentation, but I think this is usually after viewing the video, brings up a few questions, and I think I could probably use my presentation to have some visual aid in the answering of any questions. So at this time, are there any questions?
Anyone from the council?
Thanks, Mayor. Mike, how long has the National Fitness Campaign been in existence?
Thank you. That's a perfect cue to hopefully this slide that you see here. Do you see this timeline on your screen?
Not yet. Thank you. Yep, yes.
Great. So yeah, the organization has been around since 1979. There was a break in activity towards the end of the millennium, and in 2012, started back up again with a focus on, I think somebody in the video called them wraparound services, but really, that is the campaign. The campaign needs the fitness court in order to provide the healthy infrastructure for the community to engage with, and that's what was redeveloped. And we got our first round of funding in 2018, and we hope to match the 10,000 fitness courts that were created in the 70s and 80s and 90s by the year 2030.
Impressive, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, I have a few questions, please. National Fitness, are you associated with the US federal government?
No. Great question. So we are a San Francisco-based consulting group and social enterprise. So we're actually a for-profit agency with a philanthropic mission. And so we want to get people outside and active every day with the goal of changing health outcomes. So that's what we do.
Okay, and your fitness court, the ones that we saw in the video, what age group are they for?
Yeah, another really good question. We say adults of all ages, and that's basically ages 14 and over. And inclusivity is a really important part of what the campaign provides and how the fitness court was developed, such that any level user can use the fitness court. And because it's body weight movement, and because there are unlimited ways to adjust your body, then there are unlimited ways to adjust the exercises for the appropriate user. So 14 and over, and this is also by ASTM standards for outdoor fitness equipment.
Okay, and usually, if you're using fitness equipment, say in a gym or something, there's, you know, instructions posted on the equipment and restrictions and safety guidelines and all. What, are there any on this?
Yeah. I'm not sure how the lag is working on the video presentation, but the next slide I have for you to look at shows the app, which is free for the community to use, free for Miami Springs to offer to the community. And it has loads of information, has a QR code on the fitness court itself that leads people right to the app. So it's got tons of support in that regard, has challenge features.
Is there, are there instructions posted on the equipment itself?
If you'll notice, are you guys seeing my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay, so on the back wall there, you can see there are graphics on the wall, and those have since been updated and actually are better now than the picture is shown. The other really important piece about inclusivity is, of course, if you don't have an app or if you don't want to use the graphics on the wall, much like a playground, functional movement is very intuitive, and so it's very hard to do wrong. Meaning that if you step up onto the box that's not pictured here, maybe that's a bad example. If you press yourself away from the push-up bars, you're doing a push-up, and so it's functional and it works. So there's lots of ways to do it right and engage people. Additionally, there's an ambassador training program. So we work with the city through Parks and Recreation or other volunteer organizations to have folks go through an ambassador training program. And those are the folks that could lead classes, could be the point people at special events. And so those are the folks that are people helping other people. So we're trying to have a red thread of engagement in all sorts of different elements. And that's really what the campaign, again, is all about, whether it's the app, the ambassador training program, the graphics on the wall, the intuitive nature of the design of the fitness court. Those are all elements to try and engage the community, because ultimately, the idea is to get folks to use it in a way that will change health outcomes.
Okay, thank you. And how about as far as the number of persons using it at any one time?
Another really good question.
Is it crowded, or is there a certain space that you're supposed to maintain? How does that work? How do you monitor that, since it's outdoors?
Yeah. There are seven stations mapped to seven functional movements. Again, I'm not sure about the lag on the image, but hopefully, it'll populate here soon. And you can see that, you know, you can have seven different people working on seven different stations, or if you have an organized group, it can be as many as 28 people at a time. So it's quite expansive.
So it can be up to 28 people?
That's right.
Said?
Yeah.
So what size, what size is that? Like what we're looking at in real measurements? The one that you have posted right now?
38 by 38. So as a reference, think of half of the tennis court inside the playing lines, and that's about the space. So it's pretty compact, yet we can still accommodate a lot of folks.
So it's about half of a tennis court?
Half of the tennis court, again, inside the playing lines.
Okay. And what about the maintenance on it? What maintenance is required and who performs the maintenance?
Yeah, so.
On the surface and on the equipment, on the equipment itself?
Yeah, the good news is that from the ground up, this was intended to be outdoor healthy infrastructure. So it's not playground equipment that's repurposed for fitness, and it's not indoor fitness equipment that's repurposed to go outside. It's from the ground up, designed to be healthy infrastructure. So there are very few moving parts, and therefore, very little to maintain. Generally, we would suggest to cities and our partners that you budget maybe $500 to $1,000 a year for someone to go out and make sure that they're checking, you know, for the stability of boxes and the bolted-in pieces, and maybe blowing off the fitness court with a leaf blower, maybe doing some pressure washing, or we spend paint touch-up for areas that are painted to keep them looking nice and durable. That would also include any parts replacements or warranty items that would happen through the National Fitness Campaign. So that is on the city, and again, usually, it's $500 to $1,000, and parks or public works or the appropriate department would take care of that.
And as far as, since we're outdoors, since this is outdoors and we're in South Florida, mold and mildew is a big problem on surfaces. So this can be pressure washed frequently?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and I have one last question. Is there a fitness court here in South Dade, or more than one?
Oh, you asked the question I wasn't prepared for. We did mention Miami Gardens.
There is one in Miami Gardens?
Yeah.
Oh, they're building one, but there's not one.
Give me one second, I might be able to figure that out.
Because it showed the picture there before, when it showed the whole United States, and I didn't see any red indicating, I would assume that that's where one is. I didn't see any in Florida at all.
Oh, yeah. So I might be able to share my screen here too, but, I mean, another version of my screen.
In the process, or did you mention something about Miami Lakes, Omar, that they're in the process? Just Miami Gardens? Okay. Okay.
So you're going to have to pardon my lack of Florida geography, but there are multiple fitness courts throughout the state. And just as a reference, US-wide or countrywide, we have 300 partners. And again, our plan is to be at 10,000 by the year 2030 with a network of outdoor fitness gyms, and so.
I saw on your website, it seemed like you had several partners, and it may not be exactly these companies. Some health insurance companies and some other major corporations as, I guess, sponsors, or they have these fitness centers, do you know?
Yeah, we're in the fortunate.
What are they on your website? I couldn't really make out why they were at the, you know, their logos were at the bottom of their website.
Yeah. There are a number of organizations that are involved across different states that supply funding for our grant program. And so some of the larger health organizations, including Blue Cross, Blue Shield, you might have seen on the video that Priority Health in Michigan is involved. There are a number of different organizations. Some of them are health organizations. Others are partners of other kinds that help with funding. And there is a grant award that Miami Springs has been awarded, a $30,000 grant that's part and parcel of the partnership. And so those types of partnerships exist around the country.
Thank you.
Do the chair.
Yes.
I just have a couple of questions. One was, is there any warranty when the project is done as far as material? And is there any labor warranty as well?
Yeah, great. Another couple of great questions. And so the labor, we have a partner that we work with very closely, who we recommend for the assembly. And that assembly can happen through our partner EIS, and they would work on any of the, they would have all of the information around assembly warranty. As far as the fitness court is concerned, it's built, as mentioned, to be outdoors for a number of decades. Let's call it a couple of decades. The main structure is warranted for 25 years. There are some other components that have different warranties, i.e. the flooring is warranted for 10 years. So it kind of depends on each element of the fitness court. But yes, it's intended for outdoor use for a long period of time.
Okay, and the last question was, as far as art and decor, is that something that the city can decide on? Maybe something relative to the city, or the city emblem, or I don't know? Or is that something that's just already a set of options for us to pick from? How does that work?
Yeah, so there are a number, as you can imagine, with what we call the mural wall, there are a ton of different options, and actually, public art. And we actually have a featured artist series, so I don't know if any of you are art folks out there, but Jean-Michel Basquiat is one of the featured artists, as well as Keith Haring. Those are special programs, but they're available. So there's a ton of different options for art and graphics. But on the very simplest terms, our standard art and graphics option is a cyan-blue fitness court with white lettering that has some customization so that you could put a city logo or seal on the fitness court with graffiti-proof graphics.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you so much. You know, I think this is on par with the goals that we've been trying to do for our residents of continuing to provide new opportunities for living a healthy, happy, active lifestyle, and, you know, recognizing that not one type of activity is, you know, meets all needs. So it's really interesting. The cost is, you know, the $30,000 grant, we're still talking, Omar, of another $185,000?
$150,000.
$150,000, and then that would be with the installation. That would be complete.
Right.
There's nothing. Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, I had some, Omar, maybe you can speak to this. It kind of strikes me, when I look at it, it looks kind of urban. And some of the pictures that I saw where it's like in the middle of a green space, I think it looks a little out of place. Like what was the thinking around that area, I guess? Because there's people that already do exercise there, like where the, you know, in the parking lot.
That's the idea. That's exactly why the foot traffic in that area, there's people walking up and down that path all day and most of the night. I walk through there, I run through there. People use the steps at the memorial to do step-ups. They use the benches to do squats. I've seen people jump on the benches, like box jumps.
Right.
So we figured that'd be a great place. People could park. Also, we have where, I expand, I expand to, it's basically, we did a heat, they helped us do like a heat map of where most traffic of people are walking through within the city. And we found that location to be extreme people walking up and down all day. So we figured it'll look good, because they could give us with the artwork, it could look good for the city, where people can see where we put our city logo, stuff like that. We put our Parks and Rec logo. People can park at the golf course. There's already infrastructure there for parking, and we have the space for the fitness court. We talked about even doing it closer to the circle by where the memorial is, but we discussed an infrastructure, like Tammy says, about parking there might not work too well. So we thought about going on the other side, which would make it a nice little fit. But that's, you basically said exactly what we were thinking, just the area fits what we're looking for.
Right. I saw some pictures on their website where they also have it, where like, I guess, people put a canopy over it, like a shade?
Yeah, there is. Well, if it's in an open area, you can do that. We have looked at the shaded canopy there, which we think is enough, where we won't have to spend additional dollars on a shade canopy. But that's something that we could discuss if we wanted to. But one of the things that we were looking at as the city administration was trying to at least include the fitness, but not expand, spending more money on shade canopy.
Right, no, I got you.
We figured that area there would work. It's pretty shaded there. We have a lot of tree canopy, and we could probably put that there and not run into an issue with adding a shade structure.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea. Just the look of it seems really kind of urban to me, and I guess I'd want to see like kind of a rendering of what it would look like in that area, just because it's a lot of green space there. I mean, I know there's a parking lot, but, I don't know, are there other options in terms of the flooring? It seems like the flooring is that like Boise State blue, which.
Well, the color scheme is a color scheme. You decide upon, we decide on the colors we want. We've seen some of where some of the artwork that they showed us through the presentation was other cities or universities, like Stanford just has the S for Stanford. It just says Stanford on the back.
Sure.
It doesn't have to have that artistic design that you're looking at. That's what we want to put. We could easily put our city, our seal, not the seal, the logo where it says Miami Springs Parks and Recreation, we could use that.
Can the flooring be a different color? Because I've only seen the blue flooring on the.
I'm sure it can be.
So the flooring is blue on all standard colored fitness courts. If you choose, there are also other custom colors that the paint, everything that's painted blue that you see on the actual structure and wall would be painted a custom color. In that case, the flooring is. In that case, the the flooring is gray. So the two floor options would be the blue that you see. I have seen a lot of and and gray.
Would that be additional, the charge to?
Yeah, so there there is additional funding that's required for that custom coloring. To the tuner, I think five thousand dollars for custom coloring. That would also change the the floor as you had mentioned.
It's in your pocket where you can see the four different colors.
This is really cool. We did this?
No, they were, they did.
Oh, they did this. Okay, but I'm confused. The the spot here is by the circle.
That's the circle. That's correct.
Aren't we talking way down by the golf course?
Yes.
So it's not here, it's way down south.
That was one of the initial locations that we had discussed, but it flows all the way through to where the end.
Okay, okay, as far as the movement. Okay, but we're talking about, right.
Through the chair, one more question. I think maybe what Vice Mayor Fahey saying is that those arches that are like pointing out. They look very like. Walking aggressive. I don't know if is is this the only layout that they provide? Or can we select the options that or other options versus the?
Question for them.
Oh, sorry.
But that's where they have, that's also where you do your inverted pushups, your ring rolls. Fitness area, it's not.
It's hiding.
Yeah.
No, but it goes above, it goes above the wall, but I get it. I get it. I think it was just more looking for a more seamless approach, but I mean, there's only so much.
I think, I mean, to me personally, I kind of like the, you know, our historic golf course and then having this fitness right there of showing that. In addition to the golf course, you know, right now you can start the fitness and also the idea that perhaps. The logo can be Miami Springs, welcome to Miami Springs, you know, welcome to Miami Springs or something like this, a very simple. You know, color, but I I had never heard of a fitness court before, like these portable ones, you know, I mean, these popping up all over. And it's just a really neat idea for the money. It's a substantial amount.
The fitness trail at Stafford.
Okay.
Which is if not more, I think it is at Stafford, we're looking at, it's roughly about the same. So we're hoping that if we were to do this, then we wouldn't have to do the one at Stafford.
And it would bring that opportunity of that kind of exercise to that part of the springs and keeping with, you know, the golf course. And yes, and also, you know, the the food and beverage, you know, ability to. Support the food and beverage operation and and the country club, so it all ties in really together.
We'll also use that wall to put on some sponsor names soon.
Yeah, yeah.
Get people that want to sponsor a part of it.
William is saying that because he and I, well, I'll say it at the end, but we've been looking for sponsors for several things. It's lofty gold here with this council. It's just finding somebody to fund it all. Not our taxpayers necessarily.
Like Ms. Matia, the essayist said earlier, optimism.
Optimism of, listen, I'm the eternal optimist, that's for sure. Okay, so any other questions for Omar for?
Thank you.
Fitness.
Mike, thanks for the presentation.
It's very, yeah.
Thank you all. We very much look forward to this partnership.
When do you expect the Miami Gardens one to be completed?
Such a great question. If if all goes well, I would imagine. Beginning of the summer, midsummer, so next two to four months, let's call it.
You have the address for that? For the Miami Gardens?
You can get it.
Okay.
We can get it, yeah.
I'd like to maybe just drive by and even if it's not completed to see. It looks so.
The Ferguson recreational complex.
Yeah, that's where they they vote here. They have a voting precinct.
Is the is the flooring kind of like playground flooring, like that?
Pour in place. It's like a, it's like a rubber.
So what comes with the the fitness court is a a tile. It's a rubberized tile, so think of it as what you would see in a gym or a weight room. But intended for outdoors and it's it's a tile so that it's easy to maintain and replace tiles if you need to and easy to install.
It's going to be at the Betty Ferguson recreational complex, which is in the northwest corner of Northwest Hundred and Ninety Ninth Street. It's right by the stadium.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what do we need to do? Now with this, this is just the presentation.
Right, just let us know that you're. You want us to pursue this and we'll review the funding sources and then a future media will come back to you with the.
Okay.
Just so.
Get some renderings for a councilman for head.
And also.
Like at the area we're looking at.
So where the where the sidewalk, where the walking path meets the the parking lot, right? So would it be on the west side of that? Yeah, okay.
That's we we wanted to make sure you guys were on board in some capacity and then we were going to work on those decisions.
I don't think you want it, you don't want it to be under a tree, right? Because it's just going to dump leaves and stuff. Right.
There'll be a lot of research going into that.
I don't know. I mean, Mike, this is just a personal preference. To me, I think it looks a little urban. It looks like kind of Venice Beach type kind of urban. I don't know how that would look in the green space that we have there, although we have a parking lot and so maybe a a better look at at where it would go.
I think if we're talking the circle or something, then you know, that urban feel, but me personally, I.
Yeah, but I wouldn't want it. I think the best place in terms of functionality is there. I just don't know how.
I think it'll be.
It would look.
With this big pump houses there.
Yeah, there's, I know there's. So on the west side, there's the pump house. There's a little bit of space between the pump house. I was looking on Google Maps now. I'm just trying to get a sense of. Because it's not that big, thirty eight by thirty eight isn't, isn't that?
Having a thought too. I don't know if this is possible. When we look into sponsor, well, let's take a, we need a vote Heidi to pursue it or can you just consent? Consensus that we want to pursue it. Okay, and I'm just thinking perhaps to VG, since this will be very close to VG, they might want to.
Just kick in some.
Help us, yes, because or help us with sponsorship for, you know, finding sponsors for it and whatever. Because it's certainly in there, near their vicinity and, you know, our sister city, we share. Everything amenities.
And it's and it's free to the residents.
Yep, absolutely. I I think it's and such a fresh new idea of another recreational opportunity. Just to get our city healthy, happy, you know, and also, you know what happens when you're outdoors doing these things, you meet your neighbors. I mean, it's good physically, but it's so good psychologically and mentally for feeling like you belong to a place, for feeling like, you know, you. Socialize, you get to know other people, feeling, you know. Just having friends and people that you meet, you know, for a purpose of exercising and stuff. So I think all around, it's really great.
The way I envision this, I think going forward is that this will be a budgetary item for compensate for next next budget, right? That's what I'm guessing. Well, I I don't, I don't think we have this this kind of money laying around right now. Some of it's grants, only thirty grand.
What I was saying is that, as I was saying, we're waiting for the final estimates on the Stonewater project to see how much. And then we can, because we had set aside some money in ARPA for the Stafford Fitness.
So right, so that.
We can transfer.
Be applied to this, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, we'll know in the next week or two, so we'll be working on something and.
Excellent, get back to you. Excellent, sir.
And I think that we should entertain the the additional cost. I just, the color that, so. I'm just, I'm thinking driving down Curtis Parkway, we have all these beautiful oak trees, these majestic oak trees, there's green space. You're you're getting to the golf course and this wall is kind of like a monolith, like I wouldn't want to see sponsorship on on the wall. Because I feel like it's going to look like the side of a NASCAR.
Too 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 commercial.
And and the blue, I think is, I don't know, so like if it only costs five thousand extra dollars. If it goes some to make it a color, I would want it to be something that maybe promotes some kind of public art that promotes the city and something that would really. Match with the green space where you're putting it.
Yeah.
I would, you know, if we're going to do something like this, then I I think that we should really kind of pay attention to the aesthetics of it. I mean, I think that functionally, great idea. I just, I just worry about how it's going to look there.
I think, well, the city colors, I mean, I mean, green, I mean, it kind of plays right into your to your suggestion here in a way instead of.
It's just, you know.
At least if it was green and the field would go in.
Yeah, I just the the standard colors of the flooring and of the arms and that that I understand are all like necessary. But just those colors are very, because I mean, even in the video, there's pictures of it in kind of a green space and kind of. I I didn't really.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you. You don't want a sore thumb sticking out. Yeah, anywhere.
Right.
So we'll go ahead. The council is in agreement. I'm looking forward to finding a possibility to getting this done for our residents. Thank you, Omar.
Thank you.
Thanks, Omar.
Thank you.
By the way, the gym floor, I've heard, looks great.
It does.
Okay, next agenda item is a open forum and we don't have anyone signed up, no one virtually still. Eric, okay, approval of council minutes from the May ninth meeting.
Through the chair, motion to move six A.
Second.
Right, any discussion? Call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you. We have no reports from boards and commissions. Weren't we going to have a, was it June?
Yeah, they haven't met to.
Okay.
Through the chair, really, really quick, now that we're on boards and commissions, I don't know if I can ask this really quick for Heidi. I know we spoke about hiring a magistrate for the code compliance board because that board is. Dilapidated. For the most part, we have a lot of missing members and I just wanted to, I mean, I don't have time to email you.
I think that's going to be a council agenda item, right?
Down the road, yes. We are looking at potential magistrates. There's someone that I have in mind. There was someone else who we had in mind as well. Unfortunately, that didn't work out, so I did want to speak with all of you ahead of time so that you would know that that's coming. But the intent is to bring forward a, basically it's a. An agreement to have a magistrate.
All right, thank you. Okay, public hearings, we have none, so we move to the consent agenda. Are there, does anyone want to pull out any of these items, A through F for discussion? Okay.
Through the chair, motion to move nine A through and including nine F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Through the chair with discussion.
Did you want to pull out an item to discuss an item?
Yes.
Okay, then we need to, okay, we need to back up.
Through the chair, motion, motion reject, motion removed.
So let me say again, does anyone want to pull any of these items on consent agenda to pull them out to discuss individually?
Which one? Number, letter B.
Okay, letter B. All right, anything else, anyone else? All right, so Councilman Best, do you want to?
I withdraw.
Okay, do you want to do your?
Nine B, okay. I just wanted to, I I see that we have the Reagan Park information in front of us. And I guess that's, this is a resolution for that item. So I guess this is what the rendering will be for for Reagan or?
No, this is. This isn't Reagan Park.
Reagan Park. No, 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 this is.
The playground, right, but this isn't right. This is Reagan Park.
So wait, is, you mean the playground equipment?
The the playground.
The playground itself.
Right.
Yes, so what I didn't, I I just wanted to know what what this was for. Because I I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't able to see the the information provided.
If 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 you remember when we do did our project citywide for with ARPA funding. This was one of the items was renovation of Reagan Park to include playground. I think we set aside a hundred and twenty five thousand for that. So we were able to get this playground for, I think it's ninety seven.
Okay, okay, so now I'm.
So that's what this is for. What this shows you is what the playground will look like once it's installed in Reagan Park.
Renderings, yeah.
And this will be put in that area that a few months ago in November, we completed the tiki hut. That was built through a grant from the Realtors Association, the Miami Association of Realtors. Gave us a grant for, they want to promote public spaces, gathering spaces, and so they gave us a grant to build that tiki hut. And this is the second tiki hut that they have built for our city with grant money for outdoor spaces. The first one was at the boat ramp on Northwest. On North Royal Point Cianus Boulevard. So we're really grateful to the Miami Realtors Association for. Helping us promote outdoor spaces, providing our community. You know, again, the the idea is we live in a park-like setting here in Miami Springs. And allowing our community the opportunity to enjoy that park-like setting whenever they go out is. We're lucky to have the type of community that we can do that. A lot of other cities, if you look throughout Miami Dade County, they go out and it's so hot outside. You know, just our shade canopies allows us to do, I was telling this to someone, just our shade canopies allows us to do so much more outdoors. At so many different times of the day than a lot of other municipalities in Miami Dade County. Just because if you go out in the middle of the day, there's no shade canopy with the trees to be able to even walk.
Through the chair, one more question. Now that we're talking about canopy, this area in Reagan, do we have enough shaded areas for seating? Or is it something, since we didn't max to our budget, if there's something we can incorporate to have shade for the parents if they're sitting there, I don't know.
It's another, it's another cost savings for us. We don't need a shady canopy there.
No, we don't need it.
There's a lot of tree canopy. We'd have to trim some of the tree back actually a little bit.
Okay.
But where where we're looking at, I've actually gone out there several times in a day and there's shade. There are sometimes a day, there's some sun. But we're talking about twelve o'clock, one o'clock noon, which most of your kids are at school, so maybe for summertime. But the reality is that where it's going to be footprinted at, there's 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 shade there.
And the next rendering after this level would be a little bit bigger or?
No, that's that's the playground. Yeah.
With different views of it. Same playground, but from different views, is there?
That's the playground.
With two benches or?
Yeah.
It comes with two benches.
Do we do like? One more bench?
Sure.
I mean.
Ninety seven thousand, no, I'm just kidding.
Is it, is it standard Boise blue, Boise State blue like this? I've got blue coming out of my ears.
Stan Stanford red.
It's a different type of blue.
Where where'd that come from?
It's nice that we're able to, this is, I know, something that for years we've been working on to bring that side of of the east side of Miami Springs. And to, you know, have the same amenities that have been provided in other areas of of Miami Springs. And we've been working on this project for several years and and we're really making progress there.
That's right, that's correct.
Yeah, that's great.
There's a couple of picnic tables there already and we're going to get new ones that I was going to get those anyway, but we get out another bench, that's not a problem.
And another question, would this be like an enclosed park where you open it in the early in the morning and close it late at night?
We probably do need.
Stafford Park.
Yeah.
Stafford.
Yeah, yeah.
But we probably do need to have something there, like the signs that we have at the other parks. It's closed from sunset to sunrise or something.
It'll be just like all other playgrounds. We'll have rules, we'll have maintenance on it, we'll have inspections.
You get them posted, you get them posted at just about every one.
Okay.
There was no way to, I'm going above and beyond, never mind.
Okay, so is there a motion for this resolution?
Mayor, I'd like to reinstate my motion for the consent agenda, nine A through nine F inclusive.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo? Yes. Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Old business, we have none, so now we move to new business and we have an ordinance, the first reading.
I'm going to read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, amending chapter one fifty zoning code article fourteen. Additional regulations of the city's code of ordinances by creating section one fifty dash forty six murals to define and prohibit murals. And provide parameterization regulations, regulations for existing murals in the city, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification. Providing for an effective date. This is mayor and council, this is an ordinance on first reading. So you don't necessarily have to take public comment, but seeing as there is not a room full of people who wish to speak, I I don't see that there's any comment anyways. Consistent with the direction that we received at the. Two meetings ago, I think it was at this point, this ordinance prohibits murals throughout the city. And it provides an amortization period for existing murals, which I understand we only have one that were, that I'm aware of.
That we know of.
So it provides an amortization period for murals that currently exist in the city to remain. Um, so it provides an amortization period for murals that currently exist in the city to remain through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, by which point they must be removed. Um, I'm happy to take back your feedback on any provisions of the ordinance that you see fit. If you wanna make any revisions between first and second reading, if you want to adopt it as is on first reading, or if you want to, uh, defer first reading, you can also do that. So however you'd like to proceed on this, I'm, I'm all ears.
Okay, and I'm gonna go through the process just for a moment, even though there's no one here of, if there's any comments from the public. Okay, we'll close public comment on it. Okay, yes, Councilman Best.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to be, be clear on this, um, that, uh, one fifty forty-six, and I don't have that in front of me to reference, but, uh, that will ex, that will include all areas of zoning in Miami Springs. That no murals will be permitted.
It is a citywide prohibition, yeah.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Through the chair, Heidi, can you, uh, can you define non-conforming murals, just for the record? So any, any mural that is, exists would be considered a non-conforming mural. So we only have one in the city at this point. So that would be deemed by a, it's a non-conforming mural and it would be able to remain until June twenty-third, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Okay. And one more thing, cause it's new to me and it's pretty interesting, the extension of the amortization period. Oh, they will, or whomever would fall into this criteria can request for an extension? So within thirty days, if you're looking at the ordinance on line eighty, what it reads, and I'll just read this out loud for the benefit of everyone who may not have it in front of them, it provides an owner of a mural who desires a longer amortization period shall file an application for extension with the office of the city manager within thirty days of notification of the commencement of amortization regulations. Um, the ordinance provides for notice, um, by the city to individuals or property owners who have a mural. So once they receive that notice or, or they're, they are notified rather, um, they'll have thirty days to seek an extension and that application would go to the city manager, the manager would make a determination and the only way to appeal that determination would be to come to the city council. Um, and we'd have added that the city manager's, um, decision would only be overturned for an abusive discretion, so it would have to be basically found to have absolutely zero basis for his decision to have been rendered. Um, but if, if you're concerned about the amortization period, we can certainly, um, modify the date that's been proposed.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve eleven A.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Nay.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, on that item, when it comes back for second reading, remember that you will be, well, we're gonna have two meetings that evening. Um, because this is part of your zoning code, you will have a local planning agency meeting, so I just want to make sure that you keep that in mind. So the clerk will notice it. We usually, I think, do it half an hour.
Before?
Before our regular council meeting. Um, there's usually, just for, for those of you who may be new to the process, I don't think we've had one of these in a very long time, but we will basically convene, you'll be sitting with your local planning agency hat on, then you'll, you'll hear the hearing of the ordinance. Um, usually what we've done is we've, um, the, the council has generally recommended approval and then had the broader, uh, more detailed discussion during the second reading during the actual council meeting, so.
Through the chair, so when would that meeting be? Do we need an extension on the?
So that's the next item on your agenda is item eleven B. Mayor, if you'd like for me to read it out, go ahead.
Yes, please.
So this is item eleven B is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, extending zoning in progress for preparation and evaluation of amendments to chapter one fifty zoning code for murals, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date. Um, so if you recall, uh, a few meetings ago, we adopted a, a resolution, um, setting forth a zoning in progress and the deadline on that is coming up. So we have provided a very brief extension through the end of next month so that we can go ahead and finalize the ordinance, um, assuming on second reading. So I think, uh, with notice provisions, we'll be able to have this heard on second reading, Madam Clerk on June thirteenth. So you'll have your local planning agency meeting and your council meeting, June thirteenth and assuming the ordinance is adopted on second reading, then the zoning in progress will cease to exist at that point, but we're just giving you some room just in case.
So for the first meeting in June is when we would meet at six thirty? Where is that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we need to remember that.
And that's our last meeting of the?
No, no.
The, the second meeting in June.
Okay.
Mayor motion to approve eleven B.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Nay.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, the next agenda item is, um, other business and we have, um, a request from Vice Mayor Fahad for discussion of an election, special election.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, because we have a member of our council who is going to be, uh, running for other office and will be resigning, I know that, uh, Heidi is gonna advise the council in terms of how we will go about filling that seat. Uh, but I'm reminded of how I got to this seat, uh, and it was the, a similar thing where a member of the council resigned because she was running for school board. And so I found out after, so the, there wasn't a special election, we piggybacked on the, on the November, uh, general election. And, uh, and so I found out after I won that our charter, uh, says that if you serve one day, it counts as a two-year term. So when I served from, for the next four months, uh, come the next April, I had served a two-year term. Not to mention anybody who comes in on an interim basis to hold it while you have the election, if, if, uh, and I'm not, and again, I'm not sure what Councilman Vaskis is going to do and I'm not sure what Heidi is going to, uh, recommend for us to do. Um, but anybody that would come in on an interim basis, if you serve one day, it's a two-year term. So I think that, uh, I would like for everybody to, to consider that if we are going to be having an election, uh, my understanding is that to change the charter, it has to be by referendum, it would have to be on the ballot. And I think that it, it dissuades good people from running for these seats as they come available, if you know that, like, why? Why wouldn't you just wait? Or why run if you know that serving four months is gonna count as a two-year term, that then that'll be two years less that you could serve. So it, it just strikes me that that's something that's dissuading good, uh, good candidates from running. Uh, so, and I don't know, Heidi, do you want to speak too? Is that, is that something that is common? Uh, that if you serve one day, it counts as a full two-year term, or is that something that's kind of uncommon, that's part of our charter that we should look at maybe fixing?
So I, I haven't done a, a survey of, of how the other cities, um, and I don't, it's been a while since I've looked at this particular type of, of provision, so I, I can certainly do that analysis. As far as the election versus special election, as you know, your general election for the municipal election is next April twenty twenty-three. So that's your general election.
Yeah.
If we were to call an election to change the charter or to fill a vacancy, that would most, that would be a special election bec- for the city because it's outside of your regular, regularly scheduled election. So even if we were to, um, have our special election on the county's general election date, it would still be a special election for us. So just keep that in mind because sometimes we use those terms and
Yep.
can be confusing. But, um, at this point, uh, the resignation that we have received is effective November twenty-second of this year. Um, we are working with the Miami Dade County Supervisor of Elections Office to determine if we would be able to hold a special election. I suspect, I suspect that like in twenty twenty, where we were, where we did not have a special election, we will not have a special election to fill that vacancy. Um, and if you, you know, Councilman Best and Mayor Mitchell were on council back then, I, we prepared a, a memo explaining what the options were at that time because we did have a different set of facts. We had two members of council running. One, uh, resigned earlier than the other, so there was, there was a lot of moving parts. So as far as modifying, um, at this point, just to close the loop on, on whether a special election is needed to fill the vacancy. At this point, I don't see that we will need to do that. However, because of when the vacancy is occurring, however, the council will have to appoint someone to fill the vacancy from basically December to April. Um, and I think that, uh, I will do more analysis on this provision, but it does seem like the provision that, that Vice Mayor Fahad is referring to could affect somebody, someone who is appointed as well. So I think where, where he would like to go with this is modifying the charter and putting it out to a referendum so that you can encourage others to.
Could it also be done in the April general election?
So you have various options of how to do this. Um, it's, it's really too late to get on the August.
Sure.
Countywide election. Um, if you wanted to get on the November ballot, the deadline to submit referendum questions is July twenty-ninth. So if we were to do that, we would probably bring back a resolution to you in probably the second meeting in June, um, because you're off at that earlier July one. Uh, so most likely it would be at that second June meeting. Um, if you were to do it, if you were to add a, a question to the November ballot, that would be deemed a special election for the city. And there is a cost that's incurred with that. So and, and what I would like to do, if, if there's consensus this evening, I can go back with my team, review whether a proposal to change the charter, if we make it, um, if we have the question on November, if it can be effective for anyone who is, uh, appointed thereafter, if it's basically, if it's effective immediately, or when we would make that provision effective. Alternatively, you could have the election, you could have the question on your general election.
April.
Next April. And again, I would do the same analysis to see if we make a change to the charter in April, would it be effective immediately and would it, you know, would it address any concerns for anyone who maybe, may have been appointed from that December to April period? Um, so those are the, basically the two election dates that you're working with. One is special, one is general. Um, I'm happy to provide you with additional information so you can make a better decision as to which election you would like. Uh, because I do think that there's, there's some costs involved. I think a special election is ten to fifteen.
Yeah.
About, in costs.
So, if I could just chime in, I know then, and I can only speak from my experience, right? Um, I think that at that time, the sitting council was of the belief that if somebody was going to be appointed, that, that, and that was at that time, right? But that if somebody was gonna be appointed, that it should be somebody that didn't want to run and didn't want to stay on the council because it's unfair to have somebody have the incumbency, you know, and then run and they've been on the council. So that seems fair to me. A, if the timing of, uh, Councilman Vaskis' resignation doesn't require any special election, then I don't think it's something, I think that it's something, my opinion, I feel like it could wait until, because if, if we do pick someone based on that same logic, which I thought was fair at the time, which is why rather than, then try to step in and just decided to run because there was a spe- a, a special election. Um, then I feel like it can wait until April because conceivably who the council would pick to be the interim is not somebody that wants to continue to stay on there. In which case, the person that would be running in April would just, wouldn't have that problem. But I still feel like it's something that we should consider because had, had the, had the timing of the resignation been different, we'd be in a similar boat like what I had to, you know, that I ran for a special election and then served four months and accounted as a two-year term, which I think is just.
You came on in August.
In November. Yeah, I was, the presidential election is where I got, is where.
Wait, the election was in August, but?
No, no, my election was in November. It was the presidential election.
No, it was in August.
I believe so, Walt.
Came on in August.
I think so.
Yes.
Double check, double check, I think so.
Maybe, maybe there were presidential vibes, uh, going around in August during that election. There were, okay. Alright, so it wasn't, it wasn't November to April.
Right, it wasn't November. So that's why you're saying four months and it's not four months. You were on here way before. So this is the thing, I, and this is just up for discussion, you bring up valid point. Um, the special election, since we had two, uh, two members of the council that were resigning, um, the member that resigned immediately, you have to resign by May
Sure.
to, you know, uh, when you qualify for the
Right.
August election. The one member that resigned immediately, um, meant that we had to have the special election in August and we timed it with the county's general elections just because people are already going to the polls, that's when you were elected.
Right.
We had at least four candidates running then.
Right.
Who were running for that. And that's when you were elected. And then, uh, the other council member who said they wouldn't, they were going to resign in November, that was a different story. Um, that was, uh, what we did then, since we were going to have an election in April.
Yeah.
Because we had an April. So we agreed on the council that we would appoint someone, but that we would appoint someone who, uh, uh, said that, you know, uh, told us,
They would not.
promised they were not gonna run because it's, it is unfair for us to, you know, choose someone as an incumbent. It should be the, the resident's choice who serves in that position for a short period of time. No, um, no, that's obviously something that's within our responsibility. But obviously, someone who's an incumbent is gonna have a great advantage and be likely, very likely, um, you know, uh, re-elected in April because they've only been there a short time. So that was why we felt it was unfair because, you know, we need to allow our residents to choose, um, the council person for a two-year term. So
So it was, it was seven months then.
So you served for seven months.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Right, I was gonna, it, yes, so you served for seven months. So normally you, so what we're talking about is, and I gotta do the math here, is, um, seven, eight, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twelve and five is seventeen
Yep.
months.
Right.
Okay, instead of twenty-four. Is that correct?
Yep.
That, instead of serving twenty-four months, you served seventeen.
No, I served, well.
Seven.
I, my, my seven months count as a two-year term.
Yeah, you actually lost a year and four months.
I lost a year.
That's what I meant. Okay, so instead of, you served seven months.
Instead of twenty-four.
Instead of twenty-four.
Right.
Okay, so the thing is this that we need to consider, and I, I think it's totally valid what you're bringing up, you know? But we need to consider that the charter says no one will serve more than eight years. So eight, nine, you know, you could say, okay, you know, to, for these kinds of circumstances, but is it really, should someone serve eight and a half years, you know, and, and that's what we would be doing by extending this, um, because then you're serving, you know, anyone, if you run again, you, and I'm just using you as an example, obviously, would be serving more than eight years.
Right, well, it wouldn't apply to me. What I'm saying is that this is, this is the.
It would apply to you because we changed it.
Ultimately, ultimately would.
The proposal, the proposal is not intended, right now, the proposal is not intended to be retroactive
Right.
to sitting council members.
This is, this is.
So it means that you wouldn't still not be able to run.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I already, my time, my lost time is already lost. What I'm saying is that.
That would be something that we'd consider.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm.
No, but what I'm saying is that you could, you know, if we're talking about this, that it would apply to someone here.
It, it's certainly an option that.
Certainly an option that it would apply to someone who's sitting on the council.
I, I would prefer that it not apply to me. I'm, I'm just bringing this up as, as a ideal merchant that if, in the future, this, because of the timing of the resignation, we could have been in the same boat where we needed to do a special election. And if that were the case, I didn't realize until after I had campaigned and, and, and ran that the seven months that I served were, that was a two-year term already in the books.
For more months.
So, and then the person who served as interim, right, maybe they didn't want to stay as an incumbent, but then, you know, I, I just.
They're not an incumbent, they just served.
Right, they did, right.
They're not.
Right. But they may have wanted to.
Their term as a, when we appointed them, their term ended as of, you know, the election.
Right, but if, but if a whole cycle later, that, that person would have wanted to run. So as an example, if George Loeb said, fine, the election went, he didn't run. Had he wanted to again, that's a two-year term already in the books because he served. From November to April, right? Yeah, so like.
And Great, Great Spain is another example.
Right, so the whole, the whole thing is, I mean, this is not about being retroactive to me, I'm just saying, going forward. I, I think it leaves the city the best options in terms of, of encouraging good people to run. To not have one day count as a two-year term. That, that's my whole point, and, and if in April we're having another election, I think it's something that we should consider because.
Let, okay, and let's give it some thought, I think you brought up some valid things, but I think these are special circumstances. That, you know, somebody decides to resign and, you know, we kind of have to deal with it and do the best we can with it. We did have several people that ran for office during that time. And, you know, yes, it's less, it's more closer to seven years than eight years that a person would fill. But it's still a substantial amount of time to serve on the council. So I would suggest, and this is just first blush, let's thought, think about it, but I think we can probably. Deal with this, if it gets closer right now, it's not an issue, it's not going to be an issue, I, I don't see that it. Kept anyone from running in your situation in August, you know, because I know at least we had four.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't, I don't know that those people knew that that was.
I don't know that they wouldn't have run, I mean, they're still have at least three terms and possibly a fourth, but. Maybe we can make that clear if we're going to have an election that this will, you know, and clarify that if that happens again, right now, it's not on the horizon. Given the council member that's resigning has said it's going to be effective.
Well, the reason I brought it up is.
Change his mind.
We didn't know what the timing.
If I can just clarify that point. A resignation is irrevocable?
No, but as far as the date that he said November 22nd, he can't say, I decided I want to resign earlier?
I suppose you could do that.
Right, that's what I meant, but yeah, I know he can't change his mind at resign, he's resigned, that's.
But he said it, but he set a marker, November 22.
Right.
Correct.
Through the chair. So irrespective, I think what, I guess Walter, your argument is that any person serving should have an accumulative opportunity to serve eight years. With a special election being involved in circumstances like this. The goal is an accumulative of eight years, right? So, yeah, I mean, we can say whoever we appoint has the advantage, but we also have the disadvantage if you come in, in a special election. The disadvantages, I mean, for me, I see the disadvantage in the incomer as a special election. I don't see the disadvantage as someone coming in as an appointee, investing their time. I know, people think it's an advantage, but actually it's an advantage for us as a council to see how that person works. For the city, it gives them an opportunity to show them what, you know, how they can be effective and a positive thing to city and. The residents might say, hey, you know what, we don't want him, and they already know how that person works, and it's been a couple of months, I don't. I don't see where, I think it could be more positive showcase for the residents to see that clarity and their, their commitment. And if they want to run, I don't see why they, they shouldn't be able to run, but it gives them definitely, you know. Where's our motivation, are they working for us, you know, stuff that, that I had to go through.
It's a difficult thing to do in a few months and, and it, having someone as an incumbent, you know, carries a lot of weight. So what the, the issue is for that is that we would be deciding who the incumbent basically is in that position without the. Population deciding that.
He would not be an elected official, it would be an appointed official.
Pointed and then he's running for office, but he has the, you know, it's basically running as an incumbent, whereas an incumbent has already been elected by the population. And served their term and, and shown that, you know, it's someone that they want to keep. But anyway, that's not something right now that we're discussing, what we're discussing is the.
Yeah, it's just not.
Is the term of if someone is appointed at the general election in August. Making clear that, you know, that that.
That they'll have to run again.
Completing the term of someone, yes. And Heidi, perhaps if you could find out with other cities how, you know, to give us an idea if we're really, you know, out of the loop on this or.
We'll do the research on, on what other cities provisions are when you're filling vacancies. And whether it counts towards your term or not, or, or towards your term limits or not. And then we'll also. Provide you with some additional information on, you know, if it were to, if you were to direct a special election. It could be in your April election, it's still a special election at that point as well. Because you don't have like a regularly scheduled charter election, some cities have that, so. It would be special as to the charter provisions. And we can come up with some language that you can consider. Just for discussion on whether a person who is appointed or elected to complete. The unexpired term of another council member, if that person, you know, if. If, if it would still count towards their term limits.
So Heidi, even if we wait until April, we would still have to pay for a special election, even though you're doing it during your general election?
It would not, no.
No. Okay.
The cost will still be, I think, the same. Yeah, it's still included, but it's just, but don't worry about what.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be an election.
Through, through the chair, well, maybe I can help you here a little. This, this whole thing started back when Richard Wheeler was mayor. It was before, right after John Cavalier, right? And Richard Wheeler had a circumstances where that became law. And it was called the Wheeler Amendment, and if you read up on it, it's fascinating how it happened, and if it didn't work out for him, but. Every set of circumstances that we've had here in the last number of years with, with Councilwoman Zapata and. Petrolanda and now Victor. And Dania Spino, before that, sorry, I forgot him. These, these, all these council members left before their term was up. And I always felt that, you know, if you're gonna run for something, you know, but it's unfortunate that some of these races that they want to run for. Fall not within the lines of every. Two years in April, the odd years. So what you got, you got a situation where if they push the, if they push it as far forward as they can, like Councilman Zepa, or Vasquez just did. We could probably get away without having to drag the voting machines out and cost the city money. Some other members, however, did not act in that capacity, they want, they left right away. And that is why we had to pay for the special elections. And there were all different set of circumstances, generally the school board, I think almost everyone's school board wasn't. It was one, something else, county commissioners, I forget. But, yeah, it's, it's interesting to study a lot because that's, that, that speaks exactly to what your, your, your concern is right now. And, yeah, it's gonna have to go to the voters to, for them to change it out and be in favor of it, to change a charter, I know that, but. Well, I don't know if that helps.
It just, it just, if people know that they're, they have to campaign. And that five to seven months later, you're, you're having to campaign again, conceivably.
Listen, I fully understand where you're coming from on this, and I, I, when I saw the agenda item, when, when we first got it from the clerk, when I saw it. I said, I know where he's going with this, but I didn't even look at anything up here.
Just throwing the idea out there, also, when I spoke with Heidi about putting it on the agenda, we didn't know what the timing was going to be of. So that's why I brought it up because I, I know it's something that came up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fahad.
So I'll bring back something.
Okay, and see how, you know, if we're kind of in line with what other cities or if there's new ideas on how we can try to make this.
Actually, one of the, the provisions that. When last year I mentioned to council about doing a charter revision commission. These were sort of some of the discussions that I thought would be beneficial to at least flush out and see if. Those policy considerations that may have at once made sense if they were still something that the city wanted to pursue, so.
All right, next agenda item, okay, so this is an update and bear with us here. This is an update from Miami Dade County League of Cities on the proposed county rapid transit zone ordinance. I want to refresh everyone's memory, last summer, for the first time through the League of Cities. We became aware that Vice Chair Commissioner on the County Commission, Commissioner Gilbert. Had a draft proposal, he had not submitted it to the county. But he, as a courtesy, gave it to the League of Cities, which is an organization of elected officials, voluntary elected officials. Walter Fahet sits on it for City of Miami Springs, I'm in the League of Mayors, the Mayor's Coalition. And he, Chairman Gilbert, wanted the League of Cities to kind of look over the proposal. That he was going to submit to the county, to the commissioners and get our input and. It was very concerning, it was a very broad brush approach to just creating transit. Transit oriented development throughout the county, which the county years ago decided that their growth was going to be transit oriented, but they hadn't really. Done anything to, to facilitate that. We were very, very concerned, I brought it, William and I had discussed it with our county attorneys, with Heidi, with the League of Cities on some workshops that they had. During the summer, it was still very loosey goosey, nothing definite. But we decided to bring it to the city council meeting in August 9th because at that time we were. Dealing with the pedestrian bridge issue and we felt that. Even though this wasn't anywhere near gelled, that it was important to let the community know that this was something that was in the back burner. Of Commissioner Gilbert's, Commissioner Gilbert's plan. So that was August 9th meeting, Commissioner Gilbert graciously was here at our meeting, he answered our questions on the rapid transit zone. He listened to our concerns, he stated publicly that the, the ordinance was not intended to. Impact single-family residential areas like our Bird District, which would be within the radius of. Of the transit station. And he very kindly, I, I think, took a lot of time, brought a lot of county officials with him to answer our questions. And tell us that he was working on this, this was something he was still hammering out. After that, we didn't hear anything else until this past week. This past week, we heard from the League of Cities that Commissioner Gilbert had. Submitted to the League of Cities a new draft substantially better. Not so, you know, broad brush of, you know, high density and, and, and the county taking over zoning for cities. And he wanted the League of Cities to look it over and to. Give approval for it. So we had a meeting, this was just late last week that we found out about this. We had a meeting today with the League of Cities, the League of Cities called a meeting with all the mayors to discuss this. Earlier than that, we, William and I had a meeting with our county attorneys to look at the implications. And I just wanted to.
I got elevated.
I'm sorry. No, we want to keep you a city attorney, so I'll let Heidi and William kind of discuss. What, it's, it's. It's basically a much more reasonable approach, and I think Commissioner Vice Chair Gilbert has. Allowed for the cities to retain their zoning, their single-family residence areas and stuff like this, but there's still. Some concerns, so I don't know if Heidi or William, do you want to discuss the details? And this, again, this is just what we're learning right now.
Yeah, and I, I think that the summary you provided is, is spot on. It's, it's still, as, as some would say, being massaged. The ordinance and getting to a place where I guess the sponsor of the ordinance and the county commission might, may or may not feel comfortable adopting it. So I think that the provisions that affect cities have been. Improved. But not to the point that the cities are, I, I think there's going to be pushback at some point. So I think that through the work at the league. Our office is obviously representing City of Miami Springs as well as some other municipalities, and we have some. Ideas on how to further improve this ordinance so that it doesn't affect our cities globally negatively. So I think that that'll be part of the legislative process, and hopefully before it ever gets to the county commission, it'll be in a place that's.
And part of the discussion we have with the League of Cities today. And then with Heidi and with Chad. Was that, you know, Commissioner Gilbert came here to our meeting back in August of 20.
Last year.
Last year. And he actually said that the Bird section was off the map. And that the Abraham track was not a viable place for the RTC. And. What we discussed during our meeting with the League of Cities is that we want to have, and they're trying to set up another roundtable discussion. With Commissioner Gilbert there, so that we can discuss these, these pending issues. Because overall, yes, they did improve it, they, there's a, something in the ordinance that says single-family and two-family neighborhoods are not affected. That cities repaint, remain their, retain their zoning. But there's a lot of ambiguity in the entire ordinance, and we want to be able to clear some of those points up. Because, yeah, the, the Bird section i- is out, but we want that, we wanted to say in the ordinance. That, you know, our city is not affected in any way, either at the Bird section or Abraham track. Because right now, the way it's written, the way it's written, they could actually do it in the Abraham track. But as I was mentioning today, we have two issues. Our charter, there was a charter amendment 2007 where buildings that have two or more residential units can't be, can only be three stories or 40 feet high. So, and then we have another ordinance, the Abraham track, in our code, residential uses are prohibited. So that's our zoning code right now in the city and our charter. And we want to ensure that if this ordinance passes. You know, our charter and our zoning is not trumped.
Right.
In order to, to build. Mixed, mixed developments in that area, so tho- those are some of the things we want to clear up.
And, and the, the issue is this, like was discussed at the League of Cities today. We may not be able to get that into the language because basically the vice chair is just asking the league. Will you, you know, are you for this or against it? He's not necessarily, you know, indicated that he's going to, this is just as a courtesy to, and I, and I want to state that. This is as a courtesy to the mayors and to the League of City, the elected officials, that he's doing this, he doesn't have to. You know, he can present it straight to the county commission and say, this is what I want to do, and that's very often how these county commission things go. And we find out about it, you know, the cities find out about it, oh my God, it's on, on, on the agenda. So he's very graciously asked for input from the cities and. This is a much more workable, reasonable, it does say that single-family residential units. Areas will not be affected, it allows the cities to retain their zoning and everything else. But there's some, like William said, there's some areas, when you look at the whole proposal, that, you know, could be left up to interpretation perhaps, you know. And we'd like to clarify that, we may be able to do that, we may not, we'll see at the next meeting. Either way, he's about to present it to the county commission. Very soon, I think.
June 1st.
June 1st, so.
Goes for first reading, so what, what.
We'll give you a copy of this, we'll forward a copy of the ordinance to you.
Between first and second reading, it's like a week from Wednesday.
Right, we're right, and so. You know, any suggestions you have, if you look it over, anything, any comments, the League of City asks for questions that we might have at today's meeting. And again, this happened very quickly since midweek last week to now. There may be another meeting by Friday, if they try to, you know, schedule a meeting before the June 1st. Seeing as that, you know, but, so just wanted to keep everyone posted. If you look at the proposed ordinance now, it makes a lot more sense, it's a lot clearer than that, you know, draft that we had submitted in the summer. We would have never submitted it. For the city council to review because there's tons of drafts that are, you know, being considered by all 13 commissioners. It was just that at that time, we felt that since we were discussing the, the pedestrian bridge that. We wanted to make sure that, you know, that something like this that was possibly on the horizon, that the city knew about it, that our residents knew about it.
I'm going to email all of you now, the ordinance that we received, as, as well as a detail from Mayor Corradino. Who did the, the initial analysis, I'm gonna send you that and then I'll send you the analysis that was done by our city attorneys.
No, it was.
Of the ordinance, so that you can have that.
No, it wasn't done by us, that was the county's.
Well, that was the county, the one Chad sent me, okay.
And we didn't send this when we got it last week because we were waiting for the League of Cities meeting to explain what they had sent us, you know, which was this morning at 11:00, so. This is right off the press.
Yeah, literally.
Okay, any questions, anything? We just, you know, like, like we said in August is, you know, we're keeping very close tabs on this. It's a very fluid situation still because he hasn't presented it to the county. It's a very fluid situation still, because he hasn't presented it to the county commissioners. And that's really what ultimately what matters is, you know, how the county commissioners decide to vote on it or what input they have, but.
Do the chair?
Yes.
I have a question for Heidi. Can county commissioners overrule our charter? I just have a question.
I I think that's part of the the issue here and one that the cities will be fighting back on. Because we do have our own home rule, the county has its home rule. And so there there's going to be a lot of discussion regarding that point.
It's basically the county has something that says it can overrule any city charters, right? That it has ultimate authority somehow.
I think it specifically says that. I said, I don't think it specifically says that.
I I would need to look at it, but.
I heard that today at the League of Cities, because we discussed this. And and I know I had heard that before, that ultimately the county has a superior or superior whatever authority.
For certain, certain things, they do have countywide jurisdiction.
But we do have a city that, my understanding, was here before the county was in existence. So I would think that that would carry some weight too. But again, these things come up to interpretation later on of, you know, these ambiguities.
Do the chair one last question. So would you recommend for city protection? Should push come to shove, an amendment on certain parts of our charter for protection? Where there is no jurisdiction for the commissioners, you know, for the commission to come in and overrule? I'm just trying to.
Oh, let me just, yeah, make a comment on that. That one thing that was in the draft from last summer was that the word, way it was written was that the cities could have their own zoning, decide on their own zoning. But if somebody, say, a developer approached the city and wanted to get an area rezoned, and the city denied it, that the developer had the right to go to the county and have it appealed. So basically, it meant, you know, they didn't like our answer. They just go to the county and get a yes. That's been removed from this ordinance, which is really, really important part of this.
That is.
So ultimately, the way it's written, that's why you know, at first blush, it looks like Commissioner Gilbert really listened to the League of City concerns, you know, from all the municipalities and tried to make something that's still, you know, his vision is, and it and it would be great for the county is to improve the ability to, for transportation, for mass transit throughout the county, so that people can get out of the gridlock if they choose to. But he did listen to the concerns from the municipalities and that was a major one that, from my understanding, has been removed, and I clarified that with the League of Cities today. Okay, so.
The league hasn't specifically come out yet with with an opinion, have they? I know they were initially against it, right?
But but at the meeting today, the president of the League of Cities said, look, he's not, Commissioner Gilbert isn't asking for our input on how to massage this any further. He's asking, you know, he goes, and this may change. But the League of Cities said we're will either vote to adopt, accept it to to.
Support it.
Support it, excuse me, support it or not support it. And that's basically it, or not take any action.
So the jury's out yet, basically.
So that's why I'm saying I don't know how much of whatever we want in here, you know, is really. Commissioner Gilbert isn't coming to each municipality individually. He's asking the League of Cities, a collective body, to.
And I think to the mayor's point, this this proposed ordinance came out, I think it was Wednesday, maybe Thursday of last week. So I don't know that all thirty four municipalities have had an opportunity to really digest what this ordinance could do. I think it is improved from what we saw last summer, as the mayor pointed out, but there's certainly further ways to improve it.
And I and I think clearing clearing up the ambiguities is really our, where something on one side could be interpreted a little differently. And we tend to want to interpret it, you know, to our benefit, to make sure that that it's really clear, you know, what that means, so.
As for the record, we received first notice of this on May sixteenth. And you'll see it in the email that I forwarded to you.
Okay. And then we received, and with the notice, it said, the league said, this is what we've got. We're going to call a meeting very soon. And then I think Wednesday evening was when they advised us that the meeting would be Monday. So and we didn't want to, you know, we were hoping it would be before the meeting. We were, you know, so that we could advise all of you. And luckily, it was this morning. Okay, anything else on that? And I want to thank Heidi and Chad and Roger and their whole firm for helping us digest all of this. They've been great doing that. And I know they're doing it for other cities and looking at the the details in this. The next item is an update on the annexation item. So two big issues here. All of a sudden, that we've just recently gotten information again. Again, this was middle of last week, right? Where we got a notice that the annexation is going to, Commissioner Sosa released the annexation, what would you say?
For VG for us.
Right, so it's going to be on the County Commission, June eighth.
It's it's going to be on what's called the Chairman's Policy Council on June eighth. From there, though, issue a resolution directing the county attorneys to prepare an ordinance and enter local agreements. Then it'll go to first reading at a future date at a board meeting. From there, it goes to committee, and then committee goes back to the board for second reading. That's the timeline I was given today by Jose Fuentes and by our attorneys. And they think that second reading will probably happen in sometime in October or November of this year. They want this to happen with the current commission, basically. So I think there's a push to get it finalized either October or November of this year.
I think it'll change out in November, right? It changed out in November.
Right. So put that on your calendars, June eighth. I think it's really important, you know, that they hear from us.
And we'll be there, we'll be there, mayor. I think you're probably attending that hearing. I think the manager is probably planning to attend on June eighth, so.
Okay, so any questions on that, on the annexation? Okay, the next agenda item is just, I just wanted to discuss hurricane preparedness to remind our council, our staff and our community that hurricane season starts now, June first. You know, as I don't have to tell anyone, we're extremely vulnerable in South Florida to hurricanes. The city just updated our annual hurricane and emergency preparedness plan. And we all have this. I I would advise all the council members to have a hard copy of it. Because in an emergency, internet goes down, you know, everything goes down, and you're really going to rely on a hard copy and have it at home with you. And, you know, kind of before something's coming, just kind of get familiar with how everything works. Obviously, when a hurricane comes, the best laid plans go out the window very often. And, you know, it's all hands on deck and we just deal with, you know, with what arises and tries, try to help the city staff do the most they can for our residents in our community. So and with that, I just wanted to ask our residents to please, please, please keep in mind that with the supply chain issues that we're having now, no matter how much you think, oh, it's hard to get something, you know, in August, it's going to be a lot, lot likely to be a lot, lot harder. So please start preparing now, stocking up with your, you know, canned goods, flashlights, whatever you need for hurricane season. Don't think that you're going to be able to run out, you know, at the end of July or early August and necessarily find anything on the shelves, not to, because a hurricane's coming because the supply chain issues. And also to please keep the city numbers, emergency numbers, the police numbers and all these other phone numbers of Public Works, the city hall readily available, so that, you know, when a hurricane comes or any emergency, we may not have a lot of communication, the city, you know, to know what's going on. And we really rely on residents keeping us informed of major issues and things that need to be resolved. So don't assume in an emergency that we know something's going on, you know, find a way to reach one of us, to reach somebody in the city and and let us know. We may know about it, and we're trying to deal with it, but we may very well not. So, you know, it's all eyes and ears are really appreciated. And I think with that, William, do you have anything to add to that, to the hurricane preparedness?
The senior center number is very important for seniors during hurricane season, not only that, but year round. I know you've all seen the story about the senior that was found deceased in a home here in the city and had been there for a while before a neighbor finally called, called our police department. And they responded with the fire department over there. And unfortunately, she was deceased. But, you know, our senior center constantly works with police on doing wellness checks for seniors. So if neighbors and residents out there, if you know of a of a, of your neighbor, your senior that you haven't seen, they live alone, please call the either the senior center or you can call the police department directly and they'll send someone over to make sure they're okay.
And and sadly, this resident wasn't enrolled in the senior center, had never been by. But, you know, I want to encourage all residents sixty and over, or is it fifty five? I'm not even sure, to, you know, to call the senior center and find out what they have to offer. There's so much art. It's called our Miami Springs Adult Community Center, but find out what they have to offer. And if nothing else, you know, you get on a list where they know where you live and they kind of know your situation. And if you need help, you ask for help, but also there's someone, you know, another set of eyes in our community that are looking out for you. Also, we've talked about this as an older mailing that we've had for the city. And Tammy and William are going to be updating it with information about how to contact the city, our new newsletter, trying to up our communications, the ways we communicate with our residents and the phone numbers for all of our departments and also the senior center. So this will be going out sometime soon, whenever it's ready. But it's it's a mailing that we do every so often, and it's, I think it's really valuable, because residents can put it on the refrigerator, you know, and and have this information available. So if you have any suggestions of what other things should be on here, please let William know. Okay, let's move on to reports by the city attorney.
No report this evening.
Okay, city manager?
Just wanted to, I know Tammy's going to give you some events, but I wanted to remind you that next, not this Saturday, Saturday, June fourth will be the celebration of life for former councilwoman Jennifer Rator at All Angels, and that's at ten AM. And then Tammy's got some other events for you.
Just the ongoing PCR testing at the community center is still going on Monday through Saturday. And just a reminder that the vaccine, vaccination sites are, and the flu shots are now only Mondays and Fridays only at the aquatic center from nine AM to four PM. Also, everybody should have hopefully gotten an email that every home is now eligible for the to order their third round of at home, free at home tests for COVID testing. All you have to do is follow the link at www.covid.gov/tests. Also, we have our Memorial Day celebration on May thirtieth at nine AM at the War Memorial on Curtis Parkway. Just a reminder that a few of the buildings will be closed for Memorial Day celebrations. City Hall, the Adult Community Center and Public Works will be closed. The Aquatic Center will be open from twelve to five. The Community Center will be open from six to nine thirty. PM, the parks are only open from sunrise to sunset. And the sanitation department will be picking up garbage as usual, but there will be no bulk pitups. June second is the Business and Economic Task Force meeting at six PM. June seventh is that code enforcement board meeting at seven PM. And then just to remind anybody who wants to register, they need to register for the Fourth of July event, it's a pre-registration. If you want to participate in that event, and then the deadline for that is June twenty seven.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, let's do the city council, vice mayor.
I had a recommendation that I wanted to proceed with a question. The Economic Development Board meetings, my my understanding is that a couple of them have been canceled or postponed. Is that right, Erica?
Oh.
No.
No?
One of them, one of them was shy of a, two minutes ago, was shy of a quorum, so any, but they still met. But nothing made any, nothing could go from it, you know, you know what I mean? No votes in other words.
So only one of them, they didn't make.
One was delayed a week because of the passing of
passing of Michael Finney.
From the Beacon Council, but it was just delayed to the following week.
Okay, all right, because I'm just, so I know that there was the the passing of Mike Finney, but then also Max Mylum, that we still have enough board members on on that board?
I think we still have a quorum. I think we still have, what, four?
Yeah, we have six currently, and we need, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, we have seven and we're missing the other appointments that have resigned.
But we have enough for a quorum, right?
Yes, 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 okay. We always have to make sure that those, at least six show up for for the meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay, and they're they're supposed to report when, in October or September?
No, they have a one year, so by September.
So in September.
Because they started to meet in September, so ideally, but I don't know that that it'd be great if they could present the report in August, which would be in exact twelve months, because that's when we do our our budget workshop. You know, it would be our work, budget workshop, so.
I don't see them being ready.
But if not, it'll, you know, be September, which would be thirteen months. You know, they met, started meeting in September, so, and they've had a meeting every single month. There hasn't been no delay in meetings.
Okay.
And the meetings are extremely informative. You know, the the issues that they discuss, so I'm looking forward to their final report of recommendations. It'll probably be list of of recommendations of things that, you know, that we can consider, hopefully. We can move on a lot of them. Some of them may, you know, may not be possible, and some of them may take a little time.
Okay, I have nothing else. I just have those questions.
Okay, Councilwoman Bravo?
No, nothing. I just await to receive the RTC ordinance draft, because I haven't been able to look at it. There's probably a lot of answers for me there. The hurricane preparedness, very good item to bring up. Perhaps we can, if it's not already there, because Shannon's been amazing, maybe we can provide a social media link and ties into our website for the for the brochure, the the package.
We do have another, this is actually our city one. Well, this is like city working staff, but we do have another one, a hurricane preparedness, and I think we have downstairs, like a little booklet, so maybe we can put that. Except from the county, perhaps she can get that on.
Red and black one is from the county, and we just ordered, we have just placed an order with the county.
Yeah, that's the good one, though.
This is the city staff, so this is the details, the city staff, that would be for us to to know the chain of command and, you know.
Yeah, I I, he sent, he sent it to us. And that's it. Maybe I also add the elderly awareness to social media too, people that, you know, if you live next to an elderly person, here's a phone number where you can contact if you find, you know, if you haven't seen them a couple of days, you're worried, because I would have never known to to call somebody. And then you don't want to be a nosy neighbor, you know, so.
But also, if you're an elderly person and you know, just somebody that you call the senior center and you tell them, look, I live here, you know, you may want to participate in their activities or not, but just, it's.
Yep.
We were very lucky to have such a wonderful senior center and and wonderful staff, very caring staff, and so many activities and and outreach. And our police department does respond very often to, you know, on when the senior center advises that they're concerned about the resident.
Nothing else.
Nothing else, okay. Councilman Best, I want to, I have a request from a lot of people. My request is, will you die for us?
I'm gonna do something highly irregular when I'm done with my reports and recommendations, and I enjoy the publisher of the paper to stay put for five minutes. First off, I I'd like us to all to be considering Councilman Vasquez and our prayers. I know he tested positive for for COVID, and that's why he's not with us tonight, so keep him in your prayers. He was going to appear on Zoom, but apparently he still wasn't even up to that, so. I want to talk a little bit about what happened with the regional baseball tournament for both the girls and the boys with Miami Springs Senior High. They both made it to regionals, which is the FHSAA regionals, Region Ford dash five A. And the girls ended up going down to St. Brendan's, which was a powerhouse. And then the the guys went down to Key West. And then the, the guys went down to Key West and beat the Key West Conks. At Key West, there was like two thousand people at the, at the ballgame and they beat them five to three. And then they had to go to Island Coast on the left coast, over by Port Charlotte, Pontagorda over there. And they lost to a high school team over there by the name of Island Coast, uh, who had a, an inferior record to ours. Uh, so had they won that, they would have gone to Fort Myers in two weeks for state. So anyway, that's the result of the season and maybe we can get them in here one night and just, you know, I'll see what I can do about setting that up, I'll set it up with the city clerk to get them, to get them, both teams in here, be a crowded.
Yes, that would be nice.
It'd be a crowded room for that night. Um, Memorial Day, are we going to nine this year or are we doing ten? It's nine, we, I know we did it, changed it a couple of years ago because it was cooler, because it tends sometimes at like ninety five degrees out there and, uh, it's unmanageable. If I could ask my colleague for, for a hand for a minute here, this is highly irregular again.
My pleasure.
All you have to do is make sure that it fits on me. By the way, by the way, this, this is, this has to be put on behind a wall and there's two other things over it, it has to come off and I have to come out with a wig. I, I'm not, no, it's all right.
No, it's, this is a, set the stage for you, this is, um, it's, it occurs in Hamlet. And Hamlet is a tale about many people dying. And, uh, the situation is that Hamlet's father is killed by me, so I can marry his mother. This is crazy, crazy plot, but this is Shakespeare, I mean, you can read it, it's how it is. And so anyway, I play the part of Claudius, who is Hamlet's uncle, and I appear with his father's wife. And Laertes comes out and says to Hamlet, you know, something this and that, and, uh, I, as Claudius, put on the bathrobe of Polonius, which is in the form of a dummy, and we kick it out over the wall and I run across stage and put a crown on, which was Polonius's crown. And she runs away because the, because Laertes says they're supposed to be getting married, Hamlet and Laertes, however, Hamlet's crazy, he's, he's going crazy at this point in the piece. So Laertes says, well, if I go crazy, we can both be crazy and that'll work, and so she runs off stage. My wife leaves off and I'm still standing there and I'm acknowledging, you know, sun like this. So then I drop behind the wall. And I have this on underneath and over it, I have a much bigger one. Plus I had taken the bathrobe off the dummy and put that on and the crown, so I ducked behind the wall and I changed into this. And I come out from behind there after I get stabbed and die in front of the wall. And then I'm pulled off the stage by my wife who reappears. And then shortly later I come back on and Laertes is out there with Hamlet again. And so I come across the stage and I go, I'll try to reenact this for you, small, small, so, Tom, it'll take two minutes. Laertes, come here. There's poison in wine. Simply dip your sword into it. And if you but scratch him, he will die. And she goes, well, well, what if he doesn't die? He will drink it and in that way he will die. So he goes, well, what if he, you go, well, he goes, that's the way it'll be now. And I hit her, hit her in the rear end and go, on God, and they both got swords, so they start fighting and stuff. So after that, they both get killed. And then the ghost who had come from the audience is standing off to the side and says, see, see what you've done? Now you've killed the whole family and you still haven't got the right guy, I'm not dead yet, right? And so, so he comes over and stabs me and I go, I go, I just wanted to be king and comfortable. And then he stabs me and I get down on my, do the dying scene and it goes, it goes, bury me in your father's robe. It's so warm and fluffy. And, and I got a, I got a lipstick in my left hand, which no one sees, and I'd already handed the goblet to my wife. She drank the poisoned wine and she's laying on, she dies. So I hit this lipstick going across like this and you get this coming off and I lay there with my upside down facing the audience and goes, I have no regrets. Just a fun piece, it's just, and I told Ralph, I said, I'm gonna do this at the council, because I know, you know, I know a lot of you guys had things going and you couldn't make the play and stuff, but, you know, I says, you know what, Ralph will just bring it to them, you know?
And wait, does Shakespeare really have fluffy in there?
No, I don't, some of the, well, the funny part of it is, Maria, is that, is that, uh, a lot of the, uh, the Shakespeare lingo is used. But then it's, 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 it's taken apart by contemporary speaking and it, and it's hilarious for that reason. I mean, um, there's one scene where there's a woman, uh, Mary Reed, you guys know Mary Reed. Mary Reed is interviewing for a job and Shakespeare is applying for a job. And this girl by the name of Lauren Map plays Shakespeare and she's got the mask on and she looks, you know, with the, she looks just like, she's one of the best actors in Dead County, I had the pleasure of sharing a stage with her and she is interviewing for a job. And she, he says, well, you know, nothing's selling, you know, we're this and that, and, and so he comes, she, she comes out with this, this crazy idea and it's like ridiculous. Uh, and everybody dies and everything and, and in, in the particular scene I just did for you at the end there, everybody on the stage at the end of the, at the end of the scene is dead, there's like twelve people laying there on, on the floor. And, yeah, and it all happens like really guy, hats off to Ralph Wakefield, that's all I can say, putting something like that, we had thirty nine cast, cast members and they kept the troop together for two weeks and that's very hard to do, to keep a troop together for two weeks. You know, some of these places like Miami Lakes or Miami Shores and Actors Playhouse and stuff, they sometimes try and run three and four, very difficult to do that. You know, with people working and stuff and, but, um, anyway, maybe the next one we do, you can come, we'll see, we'll see what happens. Thanks, thank you, thanks for allowing that, mayor.
Aren't you glad you saved that too, Sam?
It was awesome, you know, the Pelican Playhouse, their productions, actually I did go on Sunday, but I got there too late, it was already over.
Okay, and just, um, I had a few comments, um, just wanted to let everyone know, William and I, um, last week, we hosted a little breakfast for some, potential sponsors, just, you know, advising them of some sponsorship opportunities in our city for recreation, the pickleball courts, the new racquetball courts and the, um, what was the third thing? Pickleball, racquetball and, oh, the fitness court, yes, yes, and just saying, look, um, you know, we're looking for some big name sponsors. If you'd be interested, it's, you know, a way to promote healthy outdoor, um, lifestyles in our city. Who knows if something will come up from it, but, um, if it does, you know, we'll let the council know that it's an opportunity and we'll discuss it. Um, Saturday's food distribution at the rec center that, uh, Representative Brian Avila organized with, we did it with the city of Virginia Gardens and city of Miami Springs and it was great. We, um, served meals to over five hundred families that pulled up, it's, um, just remarkable. You know, there's still a lot of need, you know, in, in, in Dead County and you can see that when people stay in line for, line up an hour before the food distribution and sit in their cars, you know, waiting to pull up to get a box of food, so, um, we're really grateful to Representative Avila and to Farm Share, who is the one that supplies the food, they do a phenomenal job with this. Also, um, on Saturday, the historical museum had the hundredth and forty-fourth birthday party for our founder Glenn Curtis. So they had cake and, um, happy birthday signs and, um, it really is an, a really nice visit to that museum. You know, there's so much to see and, and just spending an hour there and they're going to have a new exhibit soon, so, um, mid-June, I think is the last time to see the current exhibit on aviation, I encourage everyone to just stop by, you know, um, you'll, you'll, uh, be happy that you did and, um, I think that's all. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
I won't be able to be there until June of next year.
Assuming always does such a.
Oh, good. legally, they would be a non.